Are you ready? All right, I'd like to call to order the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, you do the roll call, please.
Yes. Granlund?
Here.
Petway, here. Palmer?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Hul?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Before we continue on with the meeting, I would like to take a moment and have a moment of silence for Mr. Jurgensen, art, former art teacher at Highland Elementary who passed away unexpectedly this last week. Will you take a moment of silence with me, please? Thank you. Our thoughts are with his family and with his Highlander family. Next, we have our mission statement. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Very excited tonight, we get to have a Highlander highlight. And so, we have Ella Anderson Nakora, a student at Columbia Academy, who has received the Cook Young Scholars Program Scholarship. The Cook Young Scholar, the Cook Young Scholars Program is a selective five-year pre-college scholarship for exceptionally promising seventh-grade students with financial need. It provides comprehensive academic and college advising, as well as financial support for school, Cook-sponsored summer programs, internships, and other learning enrichment opportunities. I would like to welcome up Ella, and I believe Jenny Brad is going to talk with us as well. Come on up.
So, I'm Jenny Brad. I am an avid teacher at CA, and even though Ella is not an avid, Ella is very near and dear to my heart. She's very close with most of the avid students in the eighth grade. And so, a couple of years ago, when we heard about this scholarship, we started writing essays. Ella was a sixth grader at the time. And last year, we had a scholarship winner, Kieran Carruthers. And this year, we got our Ella, and that's the first time that two students from the same school have received this incredible, incredible award. And I just want to say a little something about Ella's personality and who Ella is. I'm a community member, and Ella's very close with my son. And my seven-year-old was having a birthday party, and it happened that a lot of his friends were not able to come. And Ella and another student came to the party to liven it up and make sure that my seven-year-old was having a wonderful time. And they all jumped on the trampoline, and it was just, it was such a testament to who Ella is as a person, making sure that Theo felt loved on his birthday, at his birthday party. Ella.
I, I made like a little statement, or a little like speech, so I want to read it. Okay, this is like background information on it. You guys already said the background information. So, I'm just going to say, this scholarship, it's a pretty big deal. Not too many people like me get to do things like this. And I'm grateful for a mentor to guide me through it all, like Ms. Brad. For the past couple of years, I found my way into her room, not being a part of avid, like she said, but learning through friends in her classes, and eventually finding my way into the classroom myself. I often make connections with teachers that I don't already have. I learn and grow from them. In the spring of this year, she approached me with the opportunity to apply for this scholarship. She thought I would be a good fit, and I felt honored to be given this challenge. She always has been a cheerleader for all her students and sees the sparks in us, whether we can or not. I admire her hard work and dedication in helping me succeed. The application process was really challenging. It involved essay questions that required complex responses, but it was worth it in the end. I'd also like to thank the two people who submit recommendations for me. And although they're not here, I'd like to thank Ms. Mack and Ms. Ace, or as you guys know her by, Ms. Hun. She's our Spanish teacher. We call her Ms. Ace, which is H in Spanish. As much as they may not think, there are a big reason I'm here today, not just for being some of my favorite teachers, but for pushing me and helping me become a better student in general. I feel so lucky to be able to build relationships with these three individuals beyond the classroom. It's truly priceless. I also want to give a shout out to all my past teachers. Obviously, I won't name them all, but they all hold a special place in my heart. They molded me into the person I am today. They saw my potential and pushed me so I exceeded it. Finally, I want to thank my mom. She truly has been my biggest cheerleader since day one. She's one of the most humble people I know and raised me to be the same. This program will give me additional guidance, resources, enrich my learning, and help me to improve my future. When I first started my application, I was struggling, and I thought about giving up. But I want my story to help people see that believing in yourself really does change your life. Thanks.
Ella, congratulations on this very prestigious award and obviously very well deserved. She worked very hard for that and to be considered and then to win. Just congratulations, kudos to you, and of course, to your support network that got you here. But you put a lot of work in for this, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Does anybody else on the board wish to say anything?
Hi, Mahin.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have had the pleasure of getting to see you learn and grow over the years. And I cannot imagine a better person to have received this. I know how hard you work on things, and I know how much you put into it. And I could not be more proud of you.
Jessica.
Ella, I just want to echo their comments and just let you know that I'm personally just so thrilled for you, and I'm just so excited about the recognition of your accomplishments. Like Director Granlund, I've had the opportunity to see you grow over the years and first met you as one of the Valley View PTO kids. So, it's very exciting to see you coming into your own as an eighth grader and just really killing it. So, I'm very excited.
Michelle.
Yeah, congratulations. I also have gotten to know you a little bit. And I love that you're doing something that, you know, the younger kids who look up to you, like Anita, you know, they have a good representation and a model of like what they could be doing and what they can look forward to, and that there are opportunities there for them too. So, thank you for putting in that hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed by the people who are coming after you, who see you as, you know, kind of that guide. Not to put any more pressure on you than's already there. We're looking at you. But, you know, it means a lot. And, you know, I know that when I tell her about it, she'll be like, oh, yeah. She'll like, you know, love it. So, you'll hear about that when you see her next. But congratulations, you deserve it.
Well, congratulations, Ella. We have a certificate for you. So, I'm going to have you come up. We're going to take pictures, and then the board members all line up here, and you get to like shake everybody's hands and. You're a big deal, so we've got to recognize that.
Absolutely. How are you? I'm so proud of you. Congratulations, you're so lovely to be here. You're so lovely to be here.
And then Ella, come back this way. Yep, yep, you get to come back there. One, one day, we'll get this figured out.
We need to work on rooms.
Yeah, right? Honestly.
Another round of applause for Ella.
Also, thank you to Ms. Brad for your dedication and your hard work. I think it also speaks volumes to work that you're doing and how much you are supporting our students and providing an environment for which they can grow and succeed too.
Thank you.
Now Ella, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. I know you have joined us for board meetings in the past. You are also more than welcome to not stay. So, totally up to you. We won't be offended if you turn around and walk out, and all of you who came to support Ella as well. All right, next we have our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, any discussion? Mary, now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Next, we have our announcements. On October 10th is a Flex Learning Day. October 11th, there is no school. October 15th, at 5:30 PM, we have our work session here in the community room. October 17th and 18th, there is no school. October 18th, the district is closed. And October 22nd, at 6:00 PM, is our regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next, we have our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. All right, and we are back online. Thank you. We had somebody address the board to give us information and updates from the Student GSA organization. Thank you for that. Next, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from October, excuse me, October 8th, the school board minutes from the September 17th meeting, the September 24th meeting, and the October 1st special called meeting. It also includes the policy second reading for a student, for Policy 503, student attendance, and Policy 704, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and a fixed asset accounting system. And our policy first reading. These are the policies were reviewed at the October 1st policy meeting and consist of legislative changes that can be approved in one meeting. 516, student medication and telehealth. Notably, this policy includes an additional section related to providing a space for secondary students to receive mental health, to participate in mental health, telehealth appointments. 521, students with disabilities, nondiscrimination. 535, service animals in schools. 608, instructional services. 707, transportation of public school students. 708, transportation of non-public school students. 709, student transportation. 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material. And 806, crisis management. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Mary, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, any discussion?
I just wanted to note for folks watching that we have made some changes the last meeting and this meeting to how we, how we review or talk about the policies that are up for approval, and that we are splitting them, as Chair Mueller mentioned, into more substantive changes and legislative changes. But I also just want everyone to know that even with the legislative changes to policy, that our policy subcommittee is looking at the entirety of the policy and making appropriate changes for inclusive language, fixing errors, things like that as we're going through the policies. So, they are getting a full review, even though what that results in is largely the legislative required changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other discussion? Mary, now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our discussion reports, information items. And we'll start with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Jessica.
Oh, delightful.
You started on this side last time.
That's fine, I, I, I am prepared. I should know to be prepared. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. Since the last regular board meeting, I attended Leap Night that was a family event held at Valley View, but was hosted by both the Leap classes at Highland and Valley View. I've attended that night in the past, and what was unique about this year is that the Leap teachers actually had the Leap students present about the program to families. And so, they lined up, and one by one, each of the students talked about different components of the Leap program, what they were learning, what their favorite experiences have been in the program. So, that was really fun to hear that in the students' own words. I also, like, some of you attended a lengthy Subcommittee on Policy meeting last week where we were able to get through numerous legislative changes that needed to be made in our two-hour meeting. And then after that, I attended the special call meeting, like all of you. I was able to attend the homecoming game last weekend, last Friday. Glad that the Highlanders had a victory, very exciting. I was able to visit with a lot of community members and families at the game in between chasing my one-year-old up and down every single feature.
Slept well that night?
Yes, yes, we all slept well, yes. And then I also attended the Highland PTO meeting last week. Just another reminder of the Turkey Bingo event at Highland on November 15th. I'll continue to remind everyone ad nauseam because it's a great event. And we had great participation at this last PTO meeting. We had more families in attendance than we've had since COVID. So, it was really exciting to hear from a lot of new families to the district and get their ideas. They were very enthusiastic, had lots of feedback. So, that was really, really great. So, that's my report, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Julie.
On September 25th, I attended the Minnesota State High School League meeting with Activities Director Henderson. And there was a couple of things to note. The ninth grade governance, Superintendent Stenvik will have the opportunity to vote beginning October 4th, so she may already have voted.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. On whether or not the ninth grade athletes should be covered by the MSHSL. And so, there's just kind of some, some things to consider around that, which Director Henderson will probably explain. But one of the things is that we have to be careful about who's on what teams, what grades are on what teams, so that we're properly covering all our ninth graders when they're in activities. So, that's really important. There's also a Together partnership. It's called Together 3.0 on November 21st at the Minneapolis Marriott, which MSHSL is hosting for high school student leaders and who have a passion to make a positive impact. And we can send, I think, up to 12 students to this, and it's free. So, they get free lunch as well. So, I thought that would be a really good opportunity for our students to participate. They had some bylaw updates, updated behavior expectations, and both Director Henderson and I won an insulated mug from the raffle. So, it was actually a really great meeting to go to. I learned a lot about what MSHSL does, a lot of training and insurance. Basically, they insure us for catastrophic injuries that maybe could happen on, you know, maybe a football field or something like that. So, I also participated in the special call meeting of the Policy Committee and Special Call Board meeting on 10-1.
Mary.
Okay, it has been a busy few weeks. So, I attended the chair meeting prior to this, as well as the Subcommittee on Community Engagement. I was also here for the second special call meeting, not the two-hour one, but the two-minute one. I attended homecoming, and it was delightful. And it was really fun to see not only our team win, but also to be able to stay and celebrate with the fireworks on the field. That was delightful, so much fun, so well-attended. And, you know, congratulations to our wonderful football team on their win. I also attended the AMSD meeting last week, Friday morning, where they talked about, there was a presentation from Elevate Teaching, and they also talked about legislative advocacy. I exchanged the messages with Superintendent Stenvik on some ideas for, once the legislative season starts back up, ways that we, different ways that we can engage with our legislators here as a, as a school board and as a district. And I thought that they were really wonderful ideas in terms of just, just come and have coffee with us. No presentations, no presentations, that also for Director Hennigan's, no presentations. Other than that, I had lots of conversations with community members, with students, with staff, with Superintendent Stenvik, with Chair Lorian Mueller, with discussions with Director Maderas and Director Patway. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. So, I think that, I'm sure I left something out, but we can assume that it was busy. So, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Michelle.
Yeah, so I helped to parent facilitate our first BIPOC Advisory Committee meeting at North Park for the year, which was a lot of fun, just like the PTO meeting over at Highland. There were a lot of new families there, and everyone was so excited to kind of get together and build community. There were great ideas flying around. We had food from Big Marina. So, it was, it was an all-around good time, and I was very excited to have more than like five people there. So, we're going to keep trying to grow that. I attended the SECA fundraiser and fashion show that was hosted by Central Mix or Fixed Coffee over up on Central. And of course, my little one had to be in the fashion show. There was a three outfit change, and I was exhausted, and I was not even in it. So, it was a lot of fun, though, for her, and SECA is awesome. I had never been there. We, we got a bike for like $35. Her clothes were extra cute, and they, they weren't worn. They were really nice, and we got them for great prices. So, shout out to SECA and Central Mix for that event. I did a candidate meet and greet over at Crestview Senior Community, which was very nice, just talked to people. I don't get in those spaces a whole lot, so this time kind of gives me that opportunity to just talk to people who I haven't met or be in parts of the community I haven't been in. I also did a tour of Bella Hall, which is located in the old Unique Building off of like, I think it's 37th and Stinson. Very beautiful, high-end hall for weddings or ceremonies and gatherings like that. I mean, they've, they've been working really hard. The owner, Mohammed, gave us a tour. I went with Mayor Marcus Simila and Planning Commission's member Laurel Deneen, and that was a great experience. It was a really nice space, it's very quiet, huge parking lot, and they're still building other things in that building. So, I guess more to come on that. I also attended the special call meeting, yes, the two-minute one, not the two-hour one. Sorry, guys, but thank you for all that you do. And I attended the Boosters Annual Award Ceremony, which was great, getting to see people be awarded for their hard work. We love our boosters. And I attended the homecoming game where we did win, so good job, football team. And I also attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting before this one, and I am done. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Michelle. Laura.
Oh, I just had to add a comment, did you get any sleep?
Here and there.
Okay, I was just wondering about.
Five minutes here, five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. Well, I mean, I, I obviously had a couple of busy weeks too, but most of it was done outside of this district with 916. We had our school board retreat over there, which was a lot of fun. They actually made, they made actually playing cards, trading cards of all the board members and, and all, all the cabinet members. And we had to go around and trade cards and, you know, it was all on timer and stuff. So, that was kind of cool. So, I have my own little trading card. My daughter actually thought it was pretty awesome.
Can we find those on eBay? Can we find those on eBay? Can we find them on eBay?
I don't know, maybe, you know, there are, there are 23 cards out there. So, it's a limited collection. So, so that was kind of fun. I also attended the regular 916 board meeting. Now, the 916 has it in their budget to send two board members from one of the, of, of the districts that are on this, on this board to one of the national conferences. Now, this year, there's actually been two additional conferences that have been offered to the board members. In addition to NSBA, you, they also will send a board member to either COSPA, or there is a, a special education conference actually in December as well that they will, that, that has been added to this list. Unfortunately, it falls on the Delegate Assembly Weekend. So, that is presently a no-go. But I will be going to COSPA in Atlanta in March. So, I look forward to at least finding out how that organization is able to serve our needs, being so used to NSBA. So, this is a brand-new organization, and we'll, we'll get a little bit of background on that. So, I also attended the special call meeting last week, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Laura. Looks like everybody's been, been busy. I also attended the extra Subcommittee on Policy meeting. Again, I want to thank our Subcommittee members, Julie and Jessica, and Superintendent Stenvik and the admin team, who joined us for a non-regularly scheduled Subcommittee on Policy as we've got a lot of policies to go through with a lot of the legislative changes. Also attended the special call meeting last week as well. And again, thank you all for your time attending that special call meeting. After that, I still had a little bit of time left, so I got to watch the end of the Women's Varsity Soccer Game. So, that was a lot of fun to see. They did win that game as well, so kudos to them. I also did attend the homecoming football game, so congratulations to our football team for that homecoming win. I do have to say that I also had a fantastic time at that game watching the cheer squad.
Oh, my gosh.
They were fantastic. So, that's just such a fun thing to see now at the games. They did such a great job, and their halftime performance was phenomenal. I really enjoyed that. And you guys know I'm a band geek, so also had a really good time listening to the pep band. It's always fun. It's such, there's just so much things that are going on, so many students participating in so many different ways at some of these events, so it was really great to see. And I want to thank the Columbia Heights Boosters for their sponsorship of the fireworks show. I, I know that fireworks are challenging for some people in our community, so I appreciate the, just the patience with that. I love fireworks, and it was such a good show, like. Really good. It was really probably one of the best fireworks shows I've seen in a really long time. So, that was a lot of fun, and the students really love that experience. So, thank you to the boosters for that. As Mary said, I had a conversation with Vice Chair Granlund and was at the chair meeting just prior to this. Next, we'll move to the Superintendent's Report and Correspondence with Superintendent Stenvik.
Thank you. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to represent the metro area, which is Region 9, at the Minnesota Association of School Administrators at their board meeting and then Fall Conference. Some of the sessions I attended included a presentation from MSBA on hot topics that included Fair Labor Standards Act, among other topics, E S S T and the like. I also attended a really interesting presentation from the Detroit Lakes High School principal about how they've streamlined systems and improved the school culture. As Member Hul mentioned, the Executive Director of the Minnesota High School League, Eric Martin, spoke to everyone at the conference and explained that not all ninth graders are actually included in, in the league's catastrophic and concussion coverage. So, the statewide vote is underway, which will hopefully rectify that issue. As mentioned, last week was filled with homecoming festivities. The high school does a really good job of including the elementary schools and the middle schools by holding a pep fest at each school on that day. Additionally, crowds came to see the soccer games, and the high school held a door decorating contest. Honorable mention to someone in the audience this evening. And also, a massive student volleyball tournament, which was the first, you know, first of its kind. So, really looking forward to our spring, our new spring boys volleyball season. So, all of that included us as homecoming. I also met with Father Quail this morning, who's new to Immaculate Conception. He started last year. Many required in state, state, federal funds flow through Columbia Heights Public Schools to our local non-public schools. to our local non-public schools. I requested the meeting so that we could continue to collaborate and be in compliance with the many requirements, given that the leadership at the school is, both the principal and the clergy are new. So it was a really good conversation there. In terms of board members, I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Granland and Member Petway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the American Indian Program update and we have Yolanda Doris Loey, who is joining us via Zoom. Yes, and I'm gonna share my screen for this one.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Well, we got a lot going on. Do you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And this presentation encompasses all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation, which are all aligned to the Columbia Heights Board of Education Equity Statement. This is an informational update for the board. There is no governance to follow. The governance actually falls on our American Indian Parent Committee. And that's what Yolanda will be sharing with you all. So with that, I'll pass it over to Yolanda.
Yeah, so our parent committee needed, met on the second, six to eight, every Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month. We got a couple fluctuations on that date, but we do a pretty good, solid job of making sure that our meetings highlight what we want from our programs. We got a strong parent advisory committee. This year, we have a new PAC chair and a new co-chair, which is really exciting for us. Our elder that is on our committee took that role and she is very vocal and guides our program through cultural and very steadfast learning on her part that she feels our, our program needs. So the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee guides both the federal and state American Indian Education Program. They set our goals and our metrics. We plan our activities and set our priorities for our budgets. Our state budget funding is sixty-four thousand dollars and our federal funding is ten thousand forty-two dollars, which is, you know, well-used and double, almost double what we had previously. So, you know, state funding's going up. Our air, first area, support, support post-secondary preparation for our American Indian pupils, which is our number-one priority. Our goal for our PAC is the American Indian Students for Columbia Heights Public Schools are prepared for post-secondary opportunities. We measure this goal by making sure that we maintain a hundred percent graduation rate for our American Indian students for 2025, which we have met our goal, that goal for the last almost ten years, I think. I believe it's ten years.
Correct.
We do a really great job here. Area two, support our academic achievement of our American Indian students. Our goal, we are aggressive on our goals. American Indian students at Columbia Heights Public Schools will show a typical to-aggressive growth in literary skills at a rate of fifty percent or higher in every assessed grade, K through ten. We use our first bridge as measurement of that assessment. And we, we exceeded that goal this year. So that was really great on our children's part, too. Area three, make curriculum relevant to the needs and interests and cultural heritage of our American Indian pupils. Our goal for this area is that Columbia Heights Public Schools Language Arts Curriculum is relevant to the needs, interests and cultural heritage of American Indian students. Can, we have conducted a review of the American, or while we are continuing, conduct the, a review of the American, or sorry, English Language Arts Standards relevant to our pupils and how they are being implemented at Columbia Heights Public Schools. This is a multi-year goal. The committee has reviewed K through twelve social studies and nine through twelve ELA curriculum. We measure this by the satisfaction surveys of our parents or students with feedback and, and input from the review. Area four, provide positive reinforcement and self-image of our American Indian pupils. Our goal is that each student is given the opportunity to participate in at least three Native American cultural activities, including connections and community building with our American Indian peers. We measure this by documentation. We use sign-in sheets and we collect student feedback.
I think Yolanda exceeded that goal in the first few months last year.
Yes, and you know, we don't even have to collect feedback. Those kids give us feedback. Area five, development of intercultural awareness among pupils, parents and staff. We want a hundred percent of our American Indian students at Columbia Heights Public Schools and their family members to report that they feel culturally supported by the school staff and interconnected to their heritage and local American Indian community. We also like evaluation tools at each event. So for our direct support for our American Indian Education Program, our elementary students receive small group support, academic literacy and cultural activities. Columbia Academy, our middle school, they also got small, small group support, academic literacy and grade checks and cultural activities. And our high school students, they receive individual academic support, scholarship support, applications for college, credit monitoring and cultural support, as well as peer, peer community building. I really find that the community building has really, went beyond what we could have possibly imagined for our students here at the high school. They started out as a bunch of individual little kids coming into my office. Our students, excuse me, not little kids. I just see them as this, you know, they're still growing and they, they, they open up in a way that is just, they want this. They want to have peer support and they want to have good grades and they, you know, the cultural part of it makes so much sense to them and it connects, it connects our, our school system to what they're doing in their lives and it, it has been phenomenal. I, I, I see them grow every day. It, it's just, it's, it's beautiful. So for our family cultural events this year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we'll kick off with our student trip to Malax, what you guys will vote on tonight, October eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth, which is MEA Weekend. So they will not be missing any school for this trip. Our Native American Month Heritage Night will be a round dance, November thirteenth. And that is open to all of our American Indian families district-wide. Regalia making will start in December. Our students are very adamant that they want those classes and they want them, they wanted them to start today, but you know, with all of the other stuff that we're doing, we're like, hey, let's, let's, let's wait till December and it'll, it'll go great. Our Sacred Traditions teachings, what will be addition to our four Sacred Medicine teachings that we did last year, will just be adding on to what they already know and really bring them additional benefits to what our traditions are and helping them grow into good human beings, strong Anashinabe people. Our Sugar Bush is back on this year. We have found a new place to go and bring our kids and that will be a cultural event. It is Anashinabe Sugar Bush. And so that will be a wonderful thing to add to this year, since we missed out last year. And that was, been a wonderful tradition that Val and Superintendent Zandik have kept for our kids. We want to bring back. Our Jidkota Cultural Trip, Trip in Buffalo Trip will be in May or April, depending how warm it gets, how fast it gets warm. And then our Palau is set for May thirty-first, where we will honor, honor our graduates and our academic achievement of our younger students. Lots to do. It's beautiful.
Thanks, Yolanda. So with that, again, there's no governance for the school board informationally. I think I could see some of the regalia examples behind Yolanda. They turned this boardroom into a sewing room on the weekends and it's, they're very busy and make incredible, incredible things. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you.
And I just have to say, every time you present to the board, thank you for your passion. You can tell this is very important to you and it's showing in the success of our students. So thank you for your support that you provide our students and I'm so glad you're so passionate about that.
Yeah, I love my, I love my job.
Good. It shows. Any questions for members of the board? Mary?
No question, just a statement. Yolanda, I want to echo what Chair Mueller said. It does, your passion does show and I see it and I hear it from students independently who talk excitedly about the things that they get to do, especially with you and the regalia making. And I know last year, I heard from a number of students how wonderful it was and how, how much they got from that spiritually, I think, you know, holistically and just feeling that passion and that love. So thank you so much for what you have done to also continue to create that space for these students and families.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, I, I, I feel like when our students have just that time to be who they are, doing something that their ancestors have wanted them to do and, and use their hands in a way that creates lasting memories and items that they can hold on to. It is, especially for our graduates that graduated last year. I know they have been to Palau's this summer and they, it really connected them in a way that they didn't feel so shy about it anymore or unsure about who they were. And that, I, I just, I love that we have the space to do this. So I really do appreciate all of you and the work that you guys do. We, I wouldn't be able to do the job that I have if I didn't have the support from Superintendent Zandik and our school board and as well as our principals and teachers. And that, that has been phenomenal and enabled me to do what I do best, which is support students in a way that they can grow as human beings, which is the long run for me. I just want to add that goodness to them as anywhere I can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Yolanda. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Thank you.
Next, we have our Minnesota State High School League Grants with Activities Director Henderson.
All right. Well, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, thank you all again for having me back. Our mission in Columbia Heights, I'll read it right behind you, Chair Mueller. Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. This informational update is again a touch on all of our core values with the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. And again, this is just informational tonight and you will be taking action at a future board meeting. So the Minnesota State High School League, similar to what I presented last year, was created in two thousand and seven and its purpose is really ju, sorry, the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, not the Minnesota State High School League, was created in two thousand and seven and its purpose is, is really just to support youth participation in athletics and fine arts. So there's two grants that we can apply for right now. The first grant is Form Grant A. And this grant is given each year by the foundation just to help support all of Minnesota State High School League Athletics and Activities. It can be used for support with uniforms, equipment, transportation, et cetera. The second form, sorry, the second grant is Form B and it's also available to apply for right now. This grant can be used for some more specific things, like leadership initiatives and health and safety. Last year, we did receive both grants. And specifically, what we would like to apply for these monies for is just to assist with the cost of specific equipment purchases, continue our partnership with the Positive Coaching Alliance, which gives opportunities for training to both our coaches and to our student athletes and student leaders, supplement the cost of our impact concussion testing that we do for all of our athletes that might have any impacts. And then purchase another transportable AED. So again, this is just an informational item today and you will be taking action at a later meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board members, the two resolutions are included in the, in Board Book. I think we were on the board last year when we passed those. So we would pass the resolutions, which would then allow the grant applications to move forward. Any questions for Activities Director Henderson? Jessica?
Thank you. You mentioned receiving the grants last year, both A and B. And I'm just wondering if you can give us a sense of scale of what the general, not dollar amount, but not specific, but general dollar amount of those grants?
Yeah, the specifics would be tough right now, but thank you for the question. I think we received roughly four or five thousand dollars on Grant A and thirty-five hundred dollars roughly on Grant B. So they're sizable and they're, they're obviously really helpful monies that we can access through the Minnesota State High School League.
Thank you. And is that comparable to previous years as well?
Yeah, it, it, it does fluctuate a little bit. I'm wondering if, I do have my numbers in front of me. So the, the Form Grant A is really based on how many students you have participating and your free and reduced numbers. And so there's seven hundred thousand dollars allocated this year for that. So that is really dependent on what the postseason ticket sales are. So my understanding is it's a tax that's on these postseason tickets and that goes into, instead of to the state, it goes into this foundation. And so dependent on those sales, it fluctuates. And so there's seven hundred thousand dollars to be split among the schools for Form A and three hundred and forty thousand dollars to be split among Form B.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We will have this as an action item on an upcoming meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. I realize that I don't have the statute on here, but statutorily, we're permitted to move into closed session for the purpose of negotiation strategy. Can I please get a motion to move into closed session? So moved? Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Okay, here now proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right. We will clear out and move into closed session. We are back up. All right, we are going to return to open session. The board was in closed session for the purpose of contract, contract negotiations. Now that we're back into open session, we'll move on to our action items. The first item is the Extracurricular Schedule D. So we've got Director Hennigan's, Jake Henderson, Mr. Honigs and Mr. Shuck.
Great. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. I'll just kick it off and, and kind of give a brief overview of our process and, and how we came with the Schedule D that we have in front of the board. It's attached in the board packet. So coming out of negotiations with the teachers' union, our Local Seven Ten, we had a memorandum of an understanding that outlined to form a committee. And that committee was formed, which included two members of Local Seven Ten and then two members of the school, from the school district, one being the Activities Director. And then it outlined that we would meet four times to discuss Schedule D and changes necessary for Schedule D, or that to negotiate the changes in Schedule D that would include increasing any stipends, decreasing any stipends, removing any activities or athletics that are listed in Schedule D that were no longer being, or we were no longer doing, or any adds to the schedule of programs that, our activities or athletics that we wanted to add to the schedule. And then from this committee, we would put a recommendation for Schedule D to the school board for approval. And so we did that and we didn't meet an additional time this past Monday to discuss Schedule D further. And the recommendation from those now five meetings is in front of the school board this evening. So we did have several changes to Schedule D, both in reductions and both- So, we did have several changes to Schedule D, both in reductions in both percentages to the total of formerly was $6,000. The proposed now is $6,240 as the top, that would be the 100%. And both the activity side and on the athletic side, we saw reductions and changes. We had increases in coaches or assistant coaches, I mean, in certain athletics and decreases in certain ones, again, based on participation numbers. Director Hen, or Activities Director Jake Henderson can talk more about that, but, and then also on the activity side, decreasing in percentage, increasing in percentage and removing of, of some activities that we're no longer running. And then also, we did increase or add in boys volleyball that would start this spring, which I think everybody's excited about. So, that was our process again and then thus the recommendation to the School Board from this committee. And I'll just kind of pass it over because I'm sure some others would like just to say a few words.
You want me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, you know, this was a, a good process in, in that Schedule D needed to be cleaned up a little bit based on what we were doing. Since I've been in activities, I think this is my seventh or my eighth year, there were a lot of things that were not running, et cetera, and so that was definitely a part of our process. I think when I went into this process, I stated a couple of things to like the entire team that I know that I'm always going to advocate that our, our coaches and our advisors and our directors get paid more, even though I'm on the other side of this thing a little bit. I also, you know, advocated that, or said, just stated that it's really, you know, what our coaches, advisors and directors do is a labor of love and no one is paid what they are worth. And so, it's lots and lots of hours that they put in and it's a labor of love, not only of that activity specifically, but also of just our kids and our community too. And so, those are a couple of things that I wanted to, you know, make sure that we knew that when we're going into this thing, like that is, that is the reality. I coached, I know a lot of people that have coached and been activity advisors and, and yeah, it's, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort and they love it and I don't coach anymore because I've got a young family and that happens too because you can't, you've got to balance those things. And so, I guess, you know, just adding on to what Director Hennickens said, that those were kind of the things that were stated out front and, and things that we knew going into this process too.
So, from a, the union's perspective on this, a couple of things that we'd like to note and I think Dan will chime in on some. I think we, in the future, coming up to our next round, we'd like to start the discussions on Schedule D earlier. We'd like to have those start almost right with all the other negotiations. Having this afterwards, I think, was not the best process. So, there was some of that going on. I think also we need to have a more comprehensive look at the number of hours put in. I think as good intentioned as Jake was on this, maybe some of our data was a little old, a little inaccurate. So, I think also coupling a lot of this is the fact that some of the activities are under the supervision, the purview of the building principal, the high school principal, while others are underneath the Activities Director. Thus, Jake, you know, put out questions to all the people that are under his supervision, but we didn't necessarily gather information from those that were up underneath the high school principal. The high school principal wasn't a part of any of this process. So, I'm not saying anything negative about him, he just wasn't and maybe probably should have been. I mean, if we had done a little bit more expansive on asking the, the questions and getting a little more breakdown of how many hours each coach, each advisor spends, then we would have a little more accurate information. I think we need to do that the next time around, be a lot more comprehensive on that. And I think obviously we're, we're here today because that caused some controversy and some confusion in the process from stakeholders. So, I know that Dan Schuck here is dying to tell you his part, so I'm not going to steal a thunder from him. So, go ahead, Dan.
I don't know if dying is the right word, but I'm here. Hi, I'm Dan Schuck. Just, I started my coaching career here back in 1988. I've been coaching here a long time and I love it. Wouldn't want to coach anywhere else. But every, I've been part of the negotiation process too for about 25 years and every time we get to Schedule D, it's like pulling teeth to get a few bucks to support our coaches and our programs. And I think we, we talked earlier in the process, I thought we figured about $15,000 to $20,000 increase in that budget area would have covered new coaches. As, you know, I know soccer's building and they, they need more coaches and we agree 100%. But it wasn't that much money. So, I, I hope there's a way going forward that we can find that little extra for this area of our contract. Like, like we said earlier, coaches, they, they do this because they love to do it and it's, it's not an hourly, I have never once figured out my hourly rate. I don't want to, but it doesn't, I don't need to. I, I, we, we coach because we love to coach and just a, a little support, a little extra support financially in those areas where we need, we need coaches and need good leaders, I'd hope that we could find some, some way to find a few extra bucks there. I think that's all. Thank you.
Anything else from you guys? I just have one quick question. When we are for sports, for example, co-opping with another school, how does that work in terms of compensation for the stipend? Like, is our district sharing in that cost?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Chair Mueller, for the question. Yeah, so it's a proportional type of thing. So, sometimes we host those co-ops and, and in that we generally cover all the costs upfront and then proportionally afterwards, we charge those districts or schools that we co-op with for that portion of every single expense essentially. And so, it's proportional to the number of student athletes that they would have in their programs. And then that's vice versa, the same, once we go somewhere else and the other school may be a host for that co-op.
Thank you. All right. Since this is an action item, we will do a motion and then we will have discussion after that. Can I please get a motion to approve the Extracurricular Schedule D as presented?
So moved.
Julie, in a second.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Thank you all for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
I did have a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate it. I'm just wondering, this is probably a question for Director Hennickens, but can you tell us what the cost difference is between this schedule and the previous schedule, if any, based on these changes?
I don't have an exact number in front of me, but based on what we had in the schedule previously versus what we're going to have in the schedule now with the increases, their costs are going up as they would normally go up. But it's, because inherently everything does go up. You know, when we're looking at it, obviously there were several things that weren't running and, but we had to increase in other areas and add assistant coaches based on participation, like soccer. Soccer is a big one where it's been growing leaps and bounds and we've added assistant coaches to that. So, it's, I don't have an exact number, but we can definitely pull numbers together.
So, is the cost to the district of this schedule?
Cost to the district is, the schedule will be higher.
Okay, but you're not sure by how much?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, from our discussions, the amount of money, once the 4% increase was applied to everybody, our endeavor, according to Brian, was to make sure that we kept everything else pretty much even, that it was a set pot of money. So, I don't know if we actually did add some other things in there that, so if, if we gave the one thing, we took away from something else, we balanced things, we looked at hours and stuff.
We did try to do that, yeah.
And so, we tried to make that even. However, there was a 4% across the board that we gave to be comparable to what was in the teacher's contract for this year.
So, the intent was that the overall cost of the activity schedule would be more or less 4% higher than the previous year's schedule?
Correct. I don't know if we kept to that completely, but it should be rather close in my estimation based on what we were doing. So, yeah, we looked for things that weren't running and hopefully those things were, then we'd be able to take from that pot and go for things like soccer or, and I know it's grant money for, right now for the boys volleyball, so that's not considered, but it should have been push and pull in there and it should all come out even except for the 4% increase across the board.
And I know the Board is voting on this today, but I would be interested in getting that just so we have the comparison year to year overall. I think that would be helpful. And then I also just had a question around, like when we're reading the activity schedule, because this is not how a lot of other schedules, like in our contracts, look with the percentages. So, when we're looking at this, when it's based on a 100% base, what does that mean? Like what, when you're looking at 100%, what does that mean?
$6,240.
Yeah, it's been this way forever and I don't know who set this up originally, but yeah, 100% was, there were some high level sports that went a long season, high impact sports, football, hockey, basketball. I think it was only three or four that were considered at that 100% because of how long their season was and, you know, tennis traditionally shorter, shorter season would get less than 100% and 80%. I don't even know what the numbers are.
And fewer participants.
So, that was set up, the schedule's been set that way for many, many years long before I was here and. Yeah, so the percentages are arbitrary, really, when you think about it. There's, I don't think there's ever been a formula saying that, okay, here's soccer's, for example, we need to plug in how many weeks their season is, how many kids they have, how many games they have, what practice, and so there, so it's always been a little bit arbitrary, to be honest with you.
But I'm also hearing you say that historically the considerations have been participants and like length of season or.
I think length of season has been the biggest factor from, from the past.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I have a question. Where does the base come from? That's 62, 50 or 40. Where does that come from? Is that something that's negotiated?
It's a number that's negotiated, yeah. That's where Daniel's talking about the 4% increase, so it was 6,000, we put a 4% increase on that. And then everything else just filters down to the percentages of what that new, new base is. And Mr. Schuck was saying that it's been here for a long time. Many, many districts follow the same methodology for that. I, I don't know, I don't have an example of a district in the comparables that I've been looking at that does it differently than, you know, some kind of percentage. They exist, I know they do, but it is a very common method for this.
And, and this is the first time in recent history, last 10 to 15, 20 years, where there's been a percent increase applied to that top amount. Before it's just been like a set amount added on. It's like, well, it was 5,000, let's make it 50, 500 because it's a nice round amount. But we just kind of went with the percent increase because that's what the teacher's contract was paid, so we figured that sounded right. And it was a $240 increase, which is kind of, yeah, that's not, overall for the top paying coach, everybody else is getting less, obviously. So, that's really not a huge increase to people's stipends, but when you call it a 4% increase, you're like, oh, well, that's what the teachers got. It sounded fair, it really did. As far as what are you getting? It's like, I know it's not a lot of money, so people are kind of going, yeah, can't you give me 500, $1,000 more? That sounds better. But what kind of a percent increase is that? 20? 25? It's like, no, that's a little ridiculous. So, 4% increase made sense this time.
Other questions?
I did just have one more question. So, one of the activities or activity stipends that's eliminated in the new schedule is around ninth and 10th grade class advisors and I, but the 11th and 12th grade advisors are still a line item, so I'm, I'm curious how those advising activities will be impacted or absorbed.
So, I can speak to that because the history, things have changed at Columbia Heights as far as involvement and spirit activities and things at homecoming. Because I was around, I was one of those advisors and, and actually it used to be that we went with the class. So, I was the class of 2004 advisor. So, I was the ninth grade advisor, one year, then 10th, 11th, 12th and so on. And one of the things that we started doing in ninth grade was fundraising like you wouldn't believe in order to pay for prom, to help offset the cost of prom so it wouldn't be exorbitant for our students, right? So, we could charge them less and less and less. But some of that fundraising stuff just isn't working with our, our change in population and so on. So, rather the ninth and 10th grade, most of what goes on there is really done by student council and in order to get spirit activities and other things and kids involved. The 11th and 12th grade, that's putting on prom itself and 12th grade obviously is doing everything for graduation and, and all that kind of stuff and, you know. So, there's a lot more for the 11th, 12th. It just kind of trickled, it became irrelevant, it became obsolete to some extent and so we really didn't have ninth and 10th grade advisors. So, we, I mean, noticing that we hadn't had them for years, they're eliminated because we're just not using them. The school's changed, so we're not what we were in the 1980s, right?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Laura?
Oh, just a comment. I mean, I've been in the Board for a couple of years, a few weeks anyway. I've never seen this broken down schedule like this. This must be an enormous amount of work to go through. I, I actually hope to be able to see, see the breakdown like this and, and to be able to make sure that, that the time spent is adequately in this schedule, you know, so, because it does take a lot, a lot of accounting if, if you haven't been doing it over and over again. And like I said, this is the first time I've ever seen it. Maybe it was buried in the contract somewhere, but I didn't notice. It's such a complete overhaul.
I don't think that we pulled it out separately.
Right.
I think that when we negotiated the contract, it was in there before.
It was just in there, yeah.
So, this time around, we set it as a separate committee to discuss and then build an MOU.
Any other discussion? All right, here now proceed to vote. All those in favors, oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
No, that's okay. I was just going to say, I think one thing that I would find helpful would be just an understanding of how the percentages are gotten to. Like, how do you get to those and how is that defined? I know you said it was really, it was tricky because it's, you know, length of, length of season, it's participation, it's all those things, but just from an equity lens for our staff, I think it would be really helpful just to have a better understanding for, for us too, so that we know what are these things that we are, we're having our teachers do and what are our expectations, just so it's equitable across the Board, if that makes sense.
Jake, did you want to? He's got a massive spreadsheet with all sorts of stuff and that, that we've been looking at for quite a while when we had all of our discussions. I'm pretty sure that he could forward that onto the Board. I don't know if the Superintendent has access to it or not, but it's, it's, so we, he's got hours and everything and.
Just point of clarification.
Yes.
Is that a member request or are you saying in the future, when, when the next contract comes, that there's more clarity? Because this is included in every contract.
Yes, it is. It's, it, I mean, yes, if it's available, great. I don't, I mean, there's already been a lot of work done on this. I think for, in future, in the future, for sure, I would hope that that would come.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying.
Just before the vote. Just before the vote, I want to just note that I'll be abstaining from this particular vote as my spouse is covered by the contracting question, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Oh, Laura?
And this does comply with our district equity statement? Just want to make sure.
I would say that the whole, if I may, I would say that this restructure, as mentioned previously, really hadn't been looked into or changed much. So there were many things that were on the list that we hadn't run in many years, other new things. So I really appreciate that the committee came together with that equity lens to look at, what are we actually running? Like, this was the first time in a long time, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Schedule D was cracked wide open, and kind of everything was on the table with the four committee members. So thank you for your extra time in putting that together and your collaboration, working together.
We want you to note that we are all on the same side of the table. It's important, I mean, we are. We're all working together, we're all on the same side of the table.
Two different tables.
Technically.
Figurative table. Because when we had our fifth meeting, it was literally, we met and we were projecting on his board, and it was, are we going to sit on the same side of the table? I said, yes, we are, we're on the same side of the table, we have a common purpose. So, although we were sitting in desks.
I thought the student desks were more than comfortable, so.
High quality.
We're all gonna be punching tonight.
Yep.
Thank you all, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, now we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Yes. I almost missed it.
Yeah. I wouldn't have let you miss it. Motion carries.
Jessica had fallen asleep.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time, and thanks for sticking around.
Thank you, Jake.
All right, our next item is the clerical contract. And I'm assuming for these next several action items, we'll have both Director Bennett and Director Henneken's at the table. So we will start with the clerical contract. Would you like to... Would you like to say something prior to me asking for a motion?
That'd be great.
Okay.
It's getting late, though. Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbeck. We presented, I think it was back in August, at the 14th meeting, a closed session on the clerical custodial on food service negotiations. All three contracts have been ratified by the unions, and we're just working on getting signatures right now, but they all have been ratified. And so starting with the clerical. Some of their changes include an increase to longevity, three days of bereavement leave not deducted from sick leave, it used to be deducted from sick leave, paid holiday for Juneteenth for staff that does work over that day in June, an increase to the bilingual hourly differential, a 4% increase in year one, and a 2.5% increase in year two, and then a memorandum of understanding on earned sick and safe time, which we legally have to do, and PELRA, which is just union access to employees.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the clerical contract as presented?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the custodial contract.
And very similar to the clerical contract, increased longevity, again, some bereavement leave not deducted from sick leave. This contract did have some market adjustments to their salary schedule as we looked at comparisons with a 4% in year one and a 2.5% in year two, changing some of the language for the uniform allowance, some licensure differentials, changed reimbursement amounts, and we added a locksmith differential. One thing we did look at was we increased their personal leave from two days to three days, which is in line with a year-owned staff member. And again, they have the MOUs for earned sick and safe time and PELRA.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the custodial contract as presented?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our food service contract.
And the last contract tonight is the food service contract. Again, very similar, increased longevity, again, looking at the bereavement not deducted from sick leave. We also did some market adjustments to their salary schedule to get them more in line with comparison districts with a 4% then and a 2.5. We revised language for staff that subs in a different class. Increased to level two, three, and four certification stipends, and the same MOUs as the other groups.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the food service contract as presented?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. And thank you all for you and your negotiations team, and for all of our staff on the negotiations team for working so hard on these contracts. Thank you. All right, and next... Hey, you guys are here again. For the teachers on call rates. Do you want me to start, or are you good?
Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbeck. We presented the last board meeting on teachers-on-call subrates, and we wanted to get a board-approved document that does have the exact rates on it. We were a little bit behind because of COVID and just having to keep up with the market and needing more subs. So tonight, it's to finalize the rates, and they were in the packet. And we did have a question last time about retired subs, so we did change that number so it does reflect a higher amount than just somebody doing a daily sub.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to approve the teachers-on-call substitute rates for the 2024-2025 school year?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Jessica?
I just want to thank you for making that revision to the schedule for retired teachers. I think it's important to restore that incentive, and that was our intention, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing done, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Director Bennett, before you leave, just really quick, with the other contract motions that we passed, I did not, I mean, I just said as presented, I didn't specify the dates of the contract. That's fine, right?
For the 2024-2026 school years.
Yeah, and that's as presented, but I just want to make sure. There's the suggested motions at the bottom of my page that I didn't use, so just making sure.
You're okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, Director Hennekenz, flying solo here for the Columbia Academy roof.
All right, I was making a change on here while we were talking, because the Zoom is no longer functioning, so I'm all set up over here for the Zoom, and now I have to be here, because there is no Zoom. So apologize for that, but I was trying to be ready.
You're good.
Okay, so, thank you Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbeck. Just because this is an action item that this evening, I had some update into the board on the Friday packet, so I have a couple slides just to kind of show you. This is Columbia Academy roof bid authorization to post. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, with our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with our CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So Columbia Academy, we originally wasn't identified as one of our buildings that had roofs that were in Phase 1, which is our replacement phase of our roof study. And so that was five years ago, and almost going five, going into six years ago. And during that time, we've done some additional evaluation of the building and found that there's three sections of roof that no longer meet those requirements for, you know, a replace, not for refurbishing, and are into that Phase 1, are continuing that Phase 1 into replacement. So, you know, we checked insulation, and, you know, there's a lot more wet insulation in areas, and so deemed no longer viable for just refurbishing the roof and resurfacing the roof. And so this evening, what I'm asking for is authorization to post for bid for these three sections. So it's just approving us to post in the paper for, to accept bids. And then, once we receive those bids, I'll bring that back to the school board as an information item, and then we can move forward to the action item of actually approving, doing the project. So we're just starting with the bid authorization right now.
Thank you very much. Can I please get a motion to authorize the publishing of legal notice on solicitation of the bids for the replacement of sections of roof on Columbia Academy?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Julie?
So we obviously had a major disaster out on the East Coast, and I'm concerned about our pricing for this. Are we going to... I mean, this could be a 50% increase in materials, and it could be more than that, who knows? But my biggest concern is, if we don't get it done this year, because that pricing is going to be too high for us, what is... I mean, our roof isn't falling apart, right? I mean, how long can we last with that roof?
No, it's not, but we would have to further evaluate. I mean, it is, you know, it's in that replacement phase, and so we would deem that it's a 90s, 1990s roof. So we're deeming that as a, you know, fairly critical, you know, we should be replacing this as soon as we can. So that's why we're extending our, you know, five-year replacement of roofs to six, to get it done. I would say that, you know, yes, there's, you know, a hurricane coming into Florida again, category five right now, and yes, that's going to be a major impact to that area, and yes, there's going to be a lot of hit to, you know, supply of products for all sorts of things, I'm sure, in construction world. You know, I think the fact that we're moving now is to our benefit and getting out as fast as we can get out. And if they come back too high, we will have to, you know, work with Garland, work with our roof company. We usually use Peterson Brothers for repairs to roofs, and just evaluate how we can sustain moving forward. I don't necessarily predict it to be an immediate impact to us in that way, but if it continues, of course, there's a future impact that is not pretty, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
That is a good question, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Hennekenz. Next, we have our American Indian Overnight Field Trip Superintendent Stenbeck.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, Members of the Board. On September 24th, the board was presented with information on a proposed overnight field trip as part of the American Indian Education Program. The field trip would be over MEA weekend, so Friday, October 18th, returning Sunday, October 20th. The trip would be to the Malax Band of Ojibwe in Onamia. And the trip would be comprised of up to 10 American Indian-identifying high school students. And there is no cost to the students. This is covered by our American Indian Education funding. So seeking approval for the field trip.
Superintendent Stenbeck, can I please get a motion to approve the overnight American Indian Education Program field trip to Malax taking place October 18th to the 20th?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have Building Capacity Superintendent Stenbeck.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, Members of the Board. This is an ongoing discussion with the school board, looking at our enrollment numbers along with our enrollment patterns. So at this time, working in collaboration with Highland Elementary Principal. This evening, I'm seeking that Grade 3 at Highland Elementary be reopened to open enrollment. Also, looking at the grade levels at Columbia Heights High School, seeking that Columbia Heights High School be closed to open enrollment due to capacity. And again, this would be for the remainder of the school year unless the numbers change such that we would need to either open or close.
Thank you. I'm looking at the recommended motion here, and I just got to reword it a little bit. So can I please get a motion to approve the reopening of Highland Elementary Grade 3 to open enrollment and close Columbia Heights High School to open enrollment during the 2024-2025 school year, or unless enrollment numbers change?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
Just to clarify again, in your recommendation for the high school closure, it is ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, correct?
All, yep, all grades.
Transition, anchor, all programs as well.
Thank you, good question.
And that is only to open enrollment. Our community's students still have a place to come to school.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Julie?
Does this mean Columbia Heights is growing from an internally perspective? I mean, isn't that what that says, is that we're getting more and more students from inside our district? Which, that seems to be a really good thing.
It not, I mean, I would say it's not necessarily from inside our district, because any grade that isn't closed to open enrollment is accepting open enrollment. But as a whole, our enrollment is higher than it has been in the past. We have not, for the last eight years that I've been on the board, we have not closed this many grades to open enrollment, so.
And we've never closed the high school in the entire time I've been on here.
Wow.
And I do, like, anecdotally, I do know several people that have been told that they were not eligible for open enrollment and then have sought housing here within our school district. So we do have people that are moving to our district to attend our schools.
I just wanted to make a point for the public to see that we are growing. This is a good district, and it's exciting to see.
People want to come to school here.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, moving on to board topics. Do you have any board topics this evening, Mary?
I have one. So just wanted to note that our robotics team, as was earlier discussed, has massively grown, and this year, for the first time, Columbia Heights Public Schools will be hosting all of the tournaments. So that means we are going to have a lot of people coming in, a lot of students, and that also means that we're going to have a lot of opportunities for volunteering to support all of the influx of people. Please feel free to reach out. I'm gonna say to Director, oh my gosh, why am I blanking on... It's late, guys.
Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Henderson. I was Hennekenz, and I'm like, I know that that's not it. It's late, everybody. Please feel free to reach out to him or to our robotics coach, Ariel Orcutt. And please come and watch it. It's fantastic, it changes, it's dynamic, and it is really, really amazing to see how hard our students work on this. We may have a robotics class in some way, shape, or form, or engineering in one way, shape, or form, but it is vastly different from the things that they are doing in that robotics team. So that is the scoop on that. Our very first match zero is the October 24th. So I will be down at Columbia Academy, and welcome everybody else who's able to come join us there.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica?
I would just add to that, that actually, a robotics tournament that was hosted at Columbia Academy was my family's first introduction to this district. We took our, then, three-year-old just to check it out as community members when we first moved to Columbia Heights, and that was our first introduction to Columbia Academy and the district as a whole. So it is something that community members can also attend and... So, um, it is something that community members can also attend and see the really cool things that our students are doing. Yeah. Storytime from me.
I love it. Any other board topics?
I just have, I just have one thing I would like to share. I was talking earlier about, uh, the conference, um, that's, that, um, that was one of the ones that were offered through nine sixteen, um, about special education, is that they're actually going to be, nine sixteen is actually going to be, uh, presenting at this particular conference about the teacher apprentice program. So, uh, which is extremely exciting because it is funded, uh, for a number of years, and that is where educational assistants can actually become teachers while they work at no cost, including certifications in those, in those specific, in the EBD. Though they can, uh, but nine sixteen can actually certify these teachers now, and that is a benefit to our district. And it is, um, it is a grow-your-own program, and it actually has, um, increased the level of satisfaction of our educational assistance in nine sixteen, and those are really incredibly hard positions to find because they have the opportunity now to be able to continue their education, even at a lower wage, because they don't have to stop working while they earn their stuff. So I, I love that kind of innovation in being part of the collaboration that we have, and I'm really hopeful that, that the success of this program can actually expand, maybe even out of specialized fields. Maybe we can, maybe we can look at doing something for regular teachers, too. Maybe in the future, this is successful, just keep an, keep an eye out for it because this is really exciting. Oh, and I, and I got the cards here, and I, I was thinking this would be a fun activity for, um, for, uh, teacher induction.
I can't wait to see them closer.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I did whisper to Xena earlier if we could get, um, somehow get a copy of the Laura Palmer trading cards, so.
Oh, you don't have to, I've got, I've got all the districts.
Taking a peek.
All the districts, isn't that fun?
Nope, we just need Laura's.
Yeah.
We can all have that.
Not a good picture, sorry.
I've got a, I've got a couple, um, board topics. One is that, um, uh, for our subcommittee meetings starting next month, we're gonna do a room swap. And since, you know, I can't talk to all of you guys unless we're here in a public meeting, but the Subcommittee on Policy is gonna meet in the training room, and the Subcommittee on Community Engagement is gonna meet in this room. We've got a lot of policies that we're still trying to get through, and we've actually had a little bit of trouble hearing each other and kind of working in this large space, um, for those conversations, so we're gonna give that a try. So just beware of why that's happening, I have made that request. Also, um, if you, um, choose not to attend the robotics tournament on the twenty-fourth, please note that that is the, um, Scholarship Foundation Dinner that evening. So there's lots of things happening that day, but both of those are available to you, so if you are interested in going to the foundation dinner, please RSVP, um, the link was in our update. And then also, um, just a reminder, as trunk or treat is coming up, um, on the twenty-sixth, so let Stephanie know if you are able to volunteer for that event. It's been cold some days, it's been not, but we, we've always had a great time, um, interacting with our students and families um, in the community for that great event, so it's really a fun thing for board members to do, so if you have an opportunity.
Do we have to dress up? Do we have to dress up?
You do not have to dress up. I'm not a dress-
Strongly encouraged.
I'm not a dresser for Julie, and so I don't dress up, but I've had a great time, but I love seeing our, my fellow board members who have dressed up. It's not my shtick, but I do go and, and play games with the kids and, um, have a great time, so.
Will there be Plinko again, or are we looking at a different activity?
That's an option. It was so tall.
It was, that's why I'm asking.
Needed to be lower.
So we are, we, that is an option, we're, we're exploring other opportunities.
Excellent. But will there be candy?
To observe our backs.
Mary?
You knew that we knew where that was going.
Yes, the city provides candy, not the school district.
Good answer, yes.
So you can eat more than five dollars' worth.
Any other board topics tonight? All right, thank you all for your time, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six.